Well, good evening and welcome to the City Council and Salem Planning Commission Work Session for Wednesday, September 23rd. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask Shelby to take role.
Counselor Kaiser?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Yeah.
Counselor Osik?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here.
And Counselor Anderson, was he able to get in yet? I don't believe so. Counselor Lewis, and Mayor, you said he's not attending tonight, correct?
Correct.
And Counselor Lee Young will be joining us a little bit later this evening. Moving on to the Planning Commissioners, Commissioner Augustine?
Here.
Commissioner Griggs?
Here.
Commissioner Heller?
Here.
Commissioner Kopcho?
Here.
Commissioner Levin?
Here.
Commissioner McKinley?
Here.
Commissioner Pollak?
Here.
Commissioner Schweikart?
Here.
And Commissioner Slater?
Here.
Thank you.
And then there's staff present to be identified. Counselor Nanki, could you lead us in the pledge?
I would be honored, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any additions or deletions to this agenda, Counselor Hoy?
No.
Okay, very good. I'm gonna just, a couple of things I want to mention, if you, if you want to be recognized, raise your hand. Some of you I cannot see readily. You're more than welcome to say, you know, Bennett, I want to be called on. It doesn't bother me, but I'll try to keep track moving back and forth and I'll keep a list. I just don't want to close down my screen on participants to watch, to watch hands go up and down on the participants' list. With that, we will move forward. Eunice, are you our leader today?
I am, thank you.
Great, we'll look forward to that.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here today. I am Eunice Kim. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager in Community Development for the city of Salem. I have a lot of people here with me today, and so I just wanted to give a brief introduction. Norman Wright, the Community Development Director is here. Lisa Anderson Ogilvy, the Deputy Director of Community Development and Planning Administrator. Planner Austin Ross is here. From Public Works, we have Julie Warnicki and Patricia Farrell. From Urban Development, we have Annie Gorsky. And from our consultant team, we have Scott Friganesi, Violet Brown, and Ellen Palmquist. So tonight, I'm going to give an update on the R. Salem project, and specifically, we're going to focus on presenting the draft vision. So the draft vision for future growth really is a culmination of more than a year of community engagement, but it is still a draft. We're presenting it tonight to really provide an opportunity to discuss it and to answer questions. We're not asking for a vote on anything tonight, but we do want to hear if you have any questions, concerns, any changes you want to see. And so with that, I'm going to share my screen. Okay? Can everyone see that? Okay? Great. So tonight, I'm going to give a brief overview of the project and then talk a little bit about the outreach that we've done so far. And then I'm going to really talk about the draft vision, both the goals and the comprehensive plan map as proposed. Talk a little bit about next steps, and then hopefully have a good discussion. So the R. Salem project, just as a reminder, is a multi-year project to update what's known as our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan really is the high-level goals, policies, and map that will guide future growth and development in the Salem area for the next 20 or so years. It really guides development in terms of where are different types of housing and businesses, for example, are located in the community, what are priorities for our transportation system are, what our impact on the environment are. So it's really the overarching goals and policies that guide our development in the Salem area. And this is just a reminder that our comprehensive plan guides the development not just in the city limits, which is the black dash line you see on this map, but also the unincorporated areas of Marion and Polk County that are within our portion of the urban growth boundary. So we're really planning for this gray area that you see on the map. It's this area that when you hear people talking about 60,000 more people by 2035, that is this whole gray area and not just the city limits. And so we have been seeing a lot of growth and development in recent years, and that is expected to continue. So this is really our opportunity to plan for that growth. Where are people going to live? Where are they going to work? How are they going to move about the community? And what's the impact going to be on our natural resources? I'm going to talk a little bit about, about, about our public outreach. We've been in this visioning phase for more than a year now, and we kicked it off late, late summer, early fall. We did a little bit of work in terms of moving from visioning, high-level questions about priorities for growth, and then getting into scenarios, which are essentially different options for growth. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in this, and we did that in the spring. And now we're at the draft vision in the fall. This visioning phase has focused extensively on community engagement. We have engaged the community in a broad variety of ways. We've used traditional means. We've gone to meetings. We've had workshops. We've had events. But we have also shifted, particularly during this pandemic, to more new ways, new virtual ways, whether that's a webinar or using Facebook Live. And so we've really tried to be nimble and make sure that we're engaging the whole community as we do this project. And we've been very fortunate to partner with a lot of organizations across the city. We've engaged more than 80 community groups, and that's important to us because we know we are not going to reach the 210,000 people that live in the Salem urban area, but we are trying to make sure we hear those perspectives. So whether that's from a community group that represents a group in the community, it's really been critical and very important to us. We've attended more than 120 in-person and virtual meetings during this visioning phase, so we've really tried really hard to make sure we're hearing from the community. This is just a couple of examples of the outreach that we've done since the pandemic. Like I mentioned earlier, we really did have to shift techniques. We had our first webinar in April, and then we followed that up with Spanish videos, as well as a Facebook Live event that we held in June. And with the, with the help of Anthony Gamallo and Irma Dowd, who were really able to take questions from our community, translate them, and then translate the answers, we were really lucky to have their help on that. So we focused a lot on surveys throughout this visioning phase. I'm just going to touch on the most recent three. The first survey we did was in the spring, and I really focused on trying to understand the high-level priorities the community has for growth. These are just a few of the examples that you'll see here that really received support across the community. So these are really shared priorities that we think we've heard. So housing affordability, supporting small businesses, making sure our neighborhoods are connected, mix of uses. So all of these ideas from this survey in our outreach really informed the draft goals that we'll be presenting tonight. We followed that up with a scenario survey in the spring, and a scenario, again, is just a way of saying different options for how we could grow in the future. We had four scenarios, A, B, C, and D, but we weren't asking the community to pick which one do you like best. We were trying to test different ideas for growth in each one. So what we were trying to really figure out is what types of development do people want to see where? It was really a map-based survey. And some of the major takeaways that you'll see here is that there was definitely an interest in more mixed-use development across the city, particularly along our corridors, those with frequent transit service, for example, in our downtown areas in addition to that. People wanted to see multifamily distributed across the city and not concentrated in one neighborhood, and, and some other ideas. So these are the ideas that we use to help inform the proposed comp plan map that we'll talk about tonight. Another idea that came out of this visioning phase was the idea of a neighborhood hub. These are essentially small-scale businesses that are within neighborhoods that would serve those neighbors. So for example, a baker, a barber, maybe a small retail shop that would be within our existing single-family neighborhoods that could make it easier for people to walk, bike, or take the bus to get, to get to jobs, get to services. And because this idea was new during this phase, we thought it was important to ask the community, when we talk about neighborhood hubs, and when you talk about it, what, what does that mean? Where do you want to see them? How big should they be? What types of uses should be involved? What's really important to you when it comes to the hubs? So we found out, for example, from that survey, that people wanted a smaller cluster of businesses. They wanted to see them at intersections or on busier streets, so not right in the middle of their local street. And design was very important to them. They really wanted to make sure that they were compatible in terms of their design to the existing single-family neighborhoods. So we use this information to propose locations for neighborhood hubs in the proposed comp plan map that I will talk about tonight. So the draft vision, so we took all of that input from all the different community meetings, surveys, to really come up with what is a vision statement that can represent what Salem wants to be in the future. This is an aspirational statement, but it really tries to emphasize the shared values that we have heard in the community. So you'll see references to affordable housing, to transportation choices, local businesses, and the environment. We've also heard that it's important that our city is equitable and sustainable, and so you'll see those highlighted as well. I'm not going to go through all the draft goals in the vision. There are quite, quite, quite many of them, but I will talk a little about a few of them. Before I do that, though, I just wanted to emphasize that the draft goals are really the long-term outcomes that we hope Salem can achieve in the long term, not in the immediate term, but in the long term. And if the community agrees with these draft goals and in the council, then we will carry these forward and put them in the comp plan when we come forward to actually adopt an updated comp plan. We will also work on developing more detailed policies that really support the goals and the vision. We have started that work. You'll see in Appendix A of your vision, there's, I think, 19 or 20 pages of draft policies. We have been obviously gathering a lot of input throughout this process, so we have been capturing that. But our intention is to further flesh those out, revise those, update those as we move forward next year. So our goals really cover a broad range of topics, from housing, economic development, transportation, community facilities. And so these are kind of the main focus areas so far that we've heard are important in the community. And again, if this moves forward, then these are most likely going to be chapters in the updated comprehensive plan. So community engagement is one of the big ideas that we've heard throughout our process. Our community definitely feels that engagement is important, but the type of engagement is just as important. So we wanted to stress in this draft goal that our community engagement should be inclusive, it should be equitable, and it should be transparent. We've not only drafted this goal, but we are really trying to walk the talk when it comes to engagement in terms of actually doing this while we're doing our own outreach. For housing, you'll see kind of the ideas of housing affordability and housing choices highlighted here. The idea of housing choices is that there's obviously different needs in terms of the types of housing that the community is looking for, and so we wanted to highlight that. And one of the new ideas that we don't have in our comp plan today is this idea of the complete neighborhoods. We have heard throughout our outreach that people want to be able to better access or more easily access things like jobs, services, and amenities from their neighborhoods and within their neighborhoods. So we have highlighted that with a draft goal in the housing area. In terms of economic development, again, there's a pretty broad range of goals, everything from making sure that we continue to strengthen and diversify our economy, make sure there's access to jobs. And so the Urban Development Department is going to start a economic development strategy that will kind of dive into more of the short-term implementation, kind of focusing on recovery, but they're going to be doing outreach as well. So we are going to be coordinating closely with the Urban Development Department as we continue to get input on these. So these will continue to be updated, but these are the ideas so far that we have heard. Natural resources and natural hazards, another topic that's been important throughout our discussions. Our goals really range from protecting the environment to making sure that our community is resilient. Resiliency has come up quite a bit, given the situation that we're in. A new idea that has come out of this phase that is not in our current comprehensive plan is a specific goal about reducing greenhouse gas emissions. That has been a priority that has been mentioned in our community and brought up for, for several years now, and so we wanted to make sure that was highlighted here. The goal related to greenhouse gas emissions is pretty high level, and so we've been working, obviously, in conjunction with Public Works as they kick off the Climate Action Plan. And so if there are more details in terms of a target for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and if that's set during the Climate Action Plan, we can carry that over, and we will carry that over into the comprehensive plan. We have also a specific goal on the urban forest or the tree canopy because trees continue to be a priority in this community. So you'll notice that there's a lot of transportation goals in the draft vision, and that is because the decision was made that the policies related to transportation should live in the transportation system plan, which is a component of the comp plan. So the idea is that we wanted to have enough transportation-related goals within the comp plan to reflect the input that we've gotten from the community, but also to provide direction to the eventual update of the transportation system plan. So you'll see a lot of goals in there, and that's why that's kind of different than the other chapters. And we have a new idea of complete streets as a draft goal. While our current transportation plan definitely talks about all modes of transportation, I think that the terminology of the complete streets is, is, is not there, and so we're proposing to have a draft goal along that, along those lines. Just to really stress that our transportation network should serve all modes of transportation, all users, even emerging transportation modes. Things are always changing. Make sure we're kind of keeping on top of that. We also have a specific greenhouse gas emissions goal related to transportation. What we learned from our GHG inventory in the first phase of the R. Salem project was that transportation really was the largest source of emissions in Salem. So we wanted to make sure that we had a specific goal around greenhouse gas emissions related to transportation. We also have a new idea of equity and making sure that, we've heard that equity is a concern across all of our goals, but in particular, related to transportation. And so you see that new idea here. This is just a list of all the other transportation goals that we have. We have everything from bicycle, pedestrian, our transit system, making sure that our transportation system really supports our local economy. And so those are a broad range of goals related to transportation that you'll see in the draft. And last but not least, we have goals related to community and public services. And so public services and facilities has to do with our water, sewer, stormwater. And so we're coordinating with Public Works on these. For example, the stormwater master plan is in the process of being updated, and so we're making sure that the input and the work that Public Works has done on that translates here into the draft goals that you see here, as well as the draft policy. We also have some draft goals around community and community spaces. That is something that has been stressed kind of throughout, the need to have spaces for the community to gather. And so you'll see those here. So now I'm going to move on to the map, the proposed comprehensive map, which is another component of the draft vision document. So as you all know, we've done a lot of mapping, a lot of dot voting through this process. We did dot voting online. We did it at community meetings and at workshops. What we were truly trying to figure out is what types of development do people want to see where? And so we used all of that input to then create those four scenarios I mentioned earlier. We then got input on those scenarios to come up with a proposed comprehensive plan map. If at the end of the day, the proposed comprehensive plan map is adopted by the council, we will also be updating the zoning map and the zoning code to then align with that. So I wanted to talk through kind of four big ideas that informed the proposed comprehensive plan map. The first idea is around housing. We know from our housing needs analysis, we have a need for more multifamily housing land, and so we wanted to make sure we understood where the community wanted to see that type of housing. We heard pretty loud and clear, again, that multifamily housing should be distributed across the community and not concentrated in one neighborhood. So you will see that reflected in the proposed comprehensive plan map. We also heard that there's a desire to have a broader mix of uses, including in our single-family neighborhoods. And this is something we're going to have to do anyway with the passing of House Bill 2001. That bill is going to require us to acquire, to allow at least a duplex on every lot that allows a single-family house, as well as a triplex or a fourplex in single-family areas. The state is still working on the rules. They're actually having a hearing Thursday and Friday on those rules. But based on the preliminary draft, we would be required to allow triplexes on lots that are 5,000 square feet or more. So roughly 89% of our single-family lots would have to allow a triplex, and a fourplex would be allowed on lots 7,000 square feet or more, which is roughly 57% of our single-family lots that are, are S-owned right now. So because that work is ongoing and has a big impact on our code and on our planning for the future, we are going to incorporate that work into the R. Salem project. Another big idea that's been reflected throughout our outreach is this desire to have more mixed use, both along our corridors, like commercial, for example, that have frequent transit service in our downtown and in new areas. And so when we talk about mixed use in the community, the idea is that people who, people could do both housing and commercial uses, like retail, restaurants, offices, or they could do one or the other. We really heard in the community that when people talk about mixed use, they want to have that flexibility to use their land in, in a different, different sorts of way, partially because there is obviously some unpredictability in terms of the economy going forward, but also just be able to have that, that choice. And so we are not proposing, when we talk about mixed use, to mandate that these areas that are designated or proposed to be designated mixed use be developed as mixed use. Ultimately, that's a council policy decision, and so that can be changed, obviously, but for now, when we talk about mixed use, we are really talking about that flexibility and use. I talked a little bit about neighborhood hubs and distributing those across the city. So you'll see that in the proposed comprehensive plan map. And then in terms of employment, we heard that people want to see commercial kind of throughout the city, but also some flexibility in how and where commercial uses occur. So we've proposed kind of new ideas for live workspaces, for example, and you'll see that in the draft plan. People generally were okay with where our industrial centers are located currently, and if anything, people wanted to see just some expansions in those existing areas. So again, you'll see that reflected in the proposed comprehensive plan. So here are the proposed changes. You can see the pink, for example, are areas that we're proposing to have become mixed use. The dark purple is industrial commercial. So there are some existing industrial areas where we're, we are proposing changing to IC or industrial commercial. So some commercial uses could also go in those areas. You'll see that orange is multifamily and red is commercial. So these are the changes incorporated into the whole map. So you can see the whole proposed comprehensive plan map as one, at once. And this is our current plan. You can kind of see the changes. While it doesn't look like a significant amount of change, we are, for example, adding more than 1,500 acres of mixed-use land through, through the proposal. So our city is pretty big. Our community is pretty big, and so the, the changes, they may not look a lot, like a lot on the map, but we're really focusing on those things that we heard were priorities in the community. So I know this map is really difficult to see close up. So we did create an interactive map where you can really look at a property specifically. So I'm going to share that really quickly and get that to work. So you can access this through the R. Salem website. Can you all see that now? So you can put in an address. So I'm just going to put one on Lancaster. You can put in an address, and it will zoom into that location, and then you can see what the existing comprehensive plan designation is, as well as the proposed. And we know there's a lot of interest when you get to a map and parcel level information. So what we did is we created more, more information about what we need, for example, by mixed use. So if you click on the four more information on the map, we have a whole webpage that talks about what do we mean when we say mixed use, for example. So we're hoping that kind of provides some clarity in terms of the proposed map designations. You can also turn on the actual proposed comprehensive plan changes so you can see it all at once. And if you want to, we have this kind of spiffy swipe button where you can swipe back and forth and see what does it look like today? What are we proposing? So you can see those changes. We also have some layers, and I won't go through them all, but it's very hard to see the neighborhood hubs, and so that itself is a layer as well. Okay, so I'm going to go back to the presentation real quick. Okay. So the last but not least, if you recall, throughout this project, we've talked a lot about indicators. And the point of the indicators was to see if our future growth, however that's going to be, what that's going to look like, how that performs against different things that are important to the community. And so the comprehensive plan is really kind of the framework for how and where growth can occur. But in order to run the indicators, we had to create what's called a preferred scenario. So it's different from the comprehensive plan map in that the proposed comprehensive plan map, for example, shows all of Lancaster or a big portion of Lancaster going to mixed use. We know that all of Lancaster is not going to redevelop to mixed use. And so we took our best guess at what we think could potentially develop by 2035, and we called that our preferred scenario. So this is not an exact, exact science. It was really just so we could actually analyze our proposed comp plan map. So I'm going to run through just a few of the indicators. One of them is access to frequent transit. So you'll see here, our preferred scenario shows more housing and more jobs closer to our 15-minute service, transit service, and then we would be growing if we didn't make these changes. So we're calling that current trend. That was intentional. We focused a lot on the transit corridors. We also were intentional about trying to make sure we had more complete neighborhoods. So you'll see a growth in new households and overall households that have better access to jobs, schools, parks. We dove into the transportation model with the help of our Council of Governments to try to understand what the impact is in terms of how people will travel around the community. And there was not a significant change. And you'll see that here. It's very slight, and there's a lot of reasons for that. One of the main reasons is that land use changes alone are not enough to drive significant changes in how people travel around the city. And so we kind of did a deep dive on this and found that there are a lot of different other things we could change or levers that we could change that would have a bigger impact. So for example, if we wanted to change where transit access, where the transit bus, where the buses ran, or how frequently they ran, that would have an impact. If we wanted to price parking across the city and really basically make driving more expensive, that would have an impact. So there are other policy decisions that could be made, but what we found out is land use changes alone aren't going to drive a lot of the change in terms of our transportation modes. And because of that, we don't see a big drop in our greenhouse gas emissions from transportation that red. And so again, there are things that we could do outside of changing the land use designations, and, and we could still make some more. I mean, it's ultimately up to the council. Maybe we want to do more mixed use or more neighborhood hubs or bigger neighborhood hubs, but ultimately, land use changes alone are not going to drive that change. So speaking of greenhouse gas emissions, I just wanted to stress that we are definitely coordinating with the Climate Action Plan work that is happening, as well as all of the other planning projects that are happening. So as we get input from the community on the Climate Action Plan, we will incorporate that into the comp plan as, as if. So just really quickly, we know that, again, this is a draft. This is our best attempt based on everything that we've heard and that we've learned, but we are going to be doing outreach now to see what did we get right? Did we get things wrong? We probably did. We have an online survey available now in English and in Spanish. We will have a webinar next week where the public can ask questions, and we will answer those. And then we have 25 to 30 community meetings already set up for October and November. So we will be out and about, virtually out and about, talking to community members to get their input. We plan to then revise the draft vision and bring it back to you all in January or maybe early February and ask for your acceptance. So we're not asking for an adoption, but we would like your direction before we start changing all the zoning codes and working on the map and doing the detailed policy work. And so we will ask for kind of an acceptance at that point, and we hope to bring the whole thing back to council by the end of next year. And that's it. Thank you so much. Happy to take any questions.
Eunice?
Yeah?
I, I don't have a question at this point. I just have a comment. After an hour of struggle, I'm actually here. So I, I, I missed the whole presentation, although, who knows? My comments probably won't make any difference. I normally act like I missed the presentation, but I do have some, some comments, but I think I'll let other people comment first because I didn't really hear anything.
Excellent. Josh, go ahead.
I was wondering if Eunice could...
I was wondering if Eunice could talk a little about the new proposed R4 zone?
Sure. So I didn't, I didn't go into that, but thank you for bringing that up. So the idea of the R4 zone really comes from conversations we've had in the community where there's a lot of uncertainty about businesses and what businesses look like in the future. So there's been a desire to make it easier for people, people to do live workspaces, so to run a business out of your home. So we've proposed that along some of our single-family areas that are on major or minor arterial. So you'll see it on Market Street. You'll see some on Sunnyview. You'll see some on Center Street. And that could be expanded or not. But the idea is that people could run a business out of their home more easily. So it would be broader than our current home occupation.
Okay. So Josh, anything else? Okay, Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. A couple of questions. First one, I mean, we talked about where our next steps are and how long this may take. How, how did we involve our, or invite our counselor nominees to this process? And if they're going to inherit kind of what we're talking about today? Did we invite them just to, to watch this after the fact or during the presentation?
Yes, I, I emailed them in advance to invite them to watch this presentation. All of them have been at a meeting, at some type of meeting that I've been at to present about this project. But we will continue to listen. So we have invited them specifically.
Thank you. And then just, if, if I may?
Yes.
Our Inside Neighborhood Association sent us a letter today for, for this meeting. And it, it brought up some interesting points as we talk about community engagement and how things tie in with the transportation goal and complete streets in, in regards to the area around the Sustainable Fairview property. In particular, Reed Road. And we, we've seen this around the city as well. Because we're talking about growth and where we put things, but the complete system has to have that transportation element in place. And I know the Fairview property is, has been troublesome in the respect that it's not standard SDCs. It's development district fees. Reed Road was supposed to be improved by someone who, who knew it would take twenty years because it's been on the table since I got on council. But, you know, in their letter, they were talking about it becoming dangerous. It is extremely dangerous, as is the way Twenty-seventh connects down to it from Kubler as well. And I want to make sure that somehow we're looking at these things we want developed, but how the other systems support them? I mean, you can't put a moratorium on things, but I think we need to do something to make sure that our infrastructure is supporting the designs that we're putting on this map and, and that we're looking at them truly comprehensively. Because right now, there, we have serious issues in that neighborhood in regards to development that's taking place.
Yeah, and I appreciate that comment. I can talk a little bit about how high level, about why we're, what we're doing in terms of coordinating transportation. If you have questions specific to Reed Road, I think Lisa's here and could maybe speak to that. But generally, we did do, we, we are trying to make sure that the infrastructure supports the development pattern and the proposed densities, et cetera. We did some initial modeling to look at what the impacts of this kind of proposed comp plan map, what the impacts are in terms of congestion. We did that with the Council of Governments. And so we will look at where there needs to be improvements, either, you know, specific projects, or if the council wants to accept a higher level of congestion on a specific road. Those are decisions that will be made while we do this project. I don't know, Lisa, did you want to talk specifically about Reed Road or?
Well, I don't need a full thing on Reed Road. We can talk to staff about that. Neighborhood Association, which was another element in their letter as far as if staff would have been coordinating, which is that community engagement piece, which, you know, it, it's on the table now. It's not something that comes with the, the new R-Salem comp plan. It's, it's stuff we should be doing now, and they had some comments in there. If they would have asked, we had other, you know, potential alternatives that would mitigate some of this stuff. But it, it's not just the congestion. It, in the, in the case of Reed Road, it is a truly obsolete street, which is very dangerous. So it's not just a congestion element, which kind of slows everybody down a little bit. It, it's, it's when it becomes a hazard that, that I'm, that I'm more concerned with.
Yeah, and I appreciate the comment. I apologize for not addressing the outreach portion. We have tried really hard to engage all the neighborhood associations, inviting the chairs and land use chairs specifically to meetings. I did go to Morningside and I have talked to them about their concerns. So, so I understand.
Thank you. Anyone? Counselor Nordike?
Thank you. I just want to make a few comments. First of all, to Eunice, thank you to you and your team. I know this represents a mountain of work and a lot of late meetings. I know that a lot of these community outreach opportunities, which are of critical importance, happen after hours, and I've seen you at a number of these. A lot of times, you're waiting at a neighborhood association for your chance to speak, and you might be there until eight-thirty PM waiting to do so. And you guys are always professional, always prepared, and always ready for questions. So thank you to you and your entire team for your professionalism and detail-oriented approach throughout this. I think you guys deserve a lot of applause for that. And I know we can't really do that now, but I just want to say thank you, first of all. Secondly, I just want to underscore a couple of things in this draft document for future follow-up. On page twenty-seven of the document in front of us, we talk about goals relating to natural resources. And I just want to highlight the fact that the goals in this document include greenhouse gas emissions reductions and maintaining, increasing, and enhancing Salem's urban forest. When I take a look at what that urban forest goal actually means, it provides some detail in terms of how we go about doing that. And I just want to emphasize the fact that, number one, I'm glad these goals are in the document. And now, moving forward, the devil will be in the details for how we execute that to ensure that we live up to those goals. So I just want to highlight, underscore, and bedazzle those as two things that I find really important in this document. Also, as anyone who's been watching our city council meetings know, our council is very concerned with the lack of affordable housing. We have talked many times about the deficit in multifamily housing and other forms of housing that can be affordable. So I'm pleased to see that those things are in this document, and I look forward to how we can execute on these goals because that is really where we take this visionary document and transform into action. So I just want to say thank you for your work on this thus far, and I look forward to next steps.
Thank you. Let me just look on the next page. There we go. Kara, how about you?
Yeah, thanks. And thanks also to, to Eunice and, and Lisa and the team there echoing Counselor Nordike's comments. I know you guys put in a lot of time to get this to where it's at now. My question is around public transportation and how close are we working with chariots? And because as however many people know or may not know, the city does not run chariots. We don't have oversight over chariots. And if we're going to essentially couple our comprehensive plan with public transportation, we better be very sure about what chariots is doing. Should they change their direction, their major transportation corridors? That would put us kind of in a bind. So curious what our current, I guess, or future partnership really looks like and how much influence or sway, I guess, are we going to give to chariots and vice versa? If you could just speak to that, please.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. We've been coordinating very closely with chariots. They are on our technical advisory committee. And the city also just meets monthly with chariots on different things to better coordinate. They are going to kick off their first long-term planning of their own. They hope to get that off the ground early next year. They're working on their RFP. And so we will be involved in that process because, as they're saying, we are relying on that core network. And in addition, if we are going to be proposing areas of growth where there isn't good transit now, we want to make sure they know that, and so that maybe they can shift. And so we'll continue to work with them very closely.
I could ask a super quick follow-up. Thank you. What do we, what is the, the plan or how would we approach perhaps that if we did encounter an issue where they change their core network? Say, say it happens in, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years. What would we do? Do we have a process we'd go through or what would that look like? Is, do you have some idea of how that might work?
Yes, my understanding is that any change to the core network would have a public hearing. So I would anticipate we would participate in that. But they did try to create certainty around that core network and a process so that there would have to be a very public process to change it.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that because that's a really important point in terms of the coordination with chariots. One of the interesting things they're going to implement as part of this long-range transit plan is they've got a new modeling system called T-Best, which is a transit planning software, which is actually sensitive land use, which is not something that's, that, that most transit agencies use. So they're very excited to use this modeling system and actually trying to integrate, you know, what we're proposing as the future land use map into that is something that they think is, is, will be powerful moving into the future and help coordinate the planning efforts moving forward.
Great. Thank you. All right, Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought I would just mention that one of the things that we learned in our transportation committee working with chariots is they view the, the core network as, they, they described it as light rail without, without the rails. So that's how, that's how solid they, they view that. It's, it's as if there were tracks there, but obviously Salem doesn't have light rail. But they're that committed to that core network that that's, that's how solid that is. So I, I don't want people to take away that, that's subject to moving. Sure, is it, of course, ultimately, but really it's not. So I just, hopefully that'll help people be a little comfortable with that.
Thank you. Jane?
Two comments, well, three comments because it's an audacious task that you took, Eunice, and you've done it beautifully. It's a great report. My two comments on mentioning the Willamette Greenway. Our Rotary Club last week had a presentation on the Willamette River and all the recreational opportunities. And one of the presenters is the Willamette River Keeper. So I'm hoping that they, in addition to the Mid-Willamette Valley Visitors Association, are two of the partners that will be in those conversations because they are currently citing new trailheads on the Willamette River. They don't have one designated for Salem. They've got one north and south of us, but we should be in the mix on that, or they should be in our mix. So that's a comment. And then the second, the most interesting thing I, I read in that report that was a surprise to me is that assuming Salem Hospital and the state are our two largest employers, that only like thirteen percent of the population indicated that they wanted more multifamily housing downtown or near downtown. And that was surprising to me. It seemed like a disconnect, but curious about your thoughts on that takeaway.
I think that we've heard that people are really looking for more mixed use in the area, which includes housing in the downtown area specifically. And we've talked and heard a lot about more housing north of downtown and around downtown. So I don't take that to, to say that people don't want multifamily housing in the downtown.
Was there discussion, follow-up? Was there, was there discussion on more affordable housing? Multifamily housing downtown?
Just generally across the city, affordable housing and multifamily housing has been a priority, yes.
You're done? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up a little bit on what Jane said, and then I've got another point. The mixed use, I'm, I'm, I'm all for that. And I think it also fits in with the neighborhood hubs we have on the outside. I mean, we really are talking a lot about commercial and Lancaster, but I know you want to develop sort of neighborhood hubs all, all around the city in various spots. So somebody from South Salem doesn't have to get to Lancaster or, or commercial. I just think there is a potential danger of ending up with, instead of mixed-use sort of stuff, strip malls, you know? You know, four or five stores in a row surrounded by housing. And it seems to me, we really want to emphasize mixed use with, with a, a strip mall type thing with houses above it as opposed to just, just standing there. That's, that's just a general follow-up comment. Then I really want to talk a little bit about how greenhouse gas emissions and any climate action plan tie into our Salem. For example, tomorrow, LCDC is initiating rulemaking that will require metropolitan areas like Salem to meet greenhouse gas reduction targets. They're going to be adopted next year. And based on ODOT's transportation strategy and high-level planning by other metro areas, it's pretty, pretty clear that there's going to be some rather large changes to land use and transportation plans to meet the target, including vehicle miles per capita reduced by twenty percent. We need to plan for most new housing and jobs in compact mixed-use neighborhoods and in areas with frequent transit service. And we need, under the goals, we'll probably have to triple transit service as well as the share of trips that are made by non-single occupancy vehicles. They're very tall orders. And it certainly seems to me that, that, that kind of the R-Salem, the density, the, the transit hubs and, and locating dense housing along these corridors, all that plays into any kind of climate action plan and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So I really think that this is sort of a, a tension, a good tension that we need to, when you're considering the, the, what our Salem is, we have to see, we have to look at what the state is going to be. I don't know if they're mandating or, or giving us a model, but to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And it really relates to density and zoning and transportation. So those are my overall general comments. And if I could, Mr. Mayor, I have some specific questions, but I'm not going to waste everybody's time now because you may have answered those in the, in the presentation that I missed. But at some point in the next week or so, I'd like to meet with you, Eunice, and maybe Lisa too, so I can go into my specific questions.
Great. Okay. Thanks, Tom. Counselor Nanki?
Thanks, Ms. Mayor. Just a quick follow-up. My pencil wasn't fast enough earlier, and, and Eunice had commented on the percentage of our property that you required for triplexes. I got the, the fourplexes, but I missed the triplex number.
Triplexes is roughly eighty-nine percent of our single-family RS-owned properties are five thousand square feet or larger.
Okay, and just a general comment, not necessarily for us on the meeting, but anybody who's watching it because we all kind of know that it's out there. But we're going to be hearing from people as they start seeing those type of units pop into their neighborhood as either redevelopment or on, on some of those other lots that have been undeveloped. And so it is not an inconsequential thing. And again, as, as Counselor Anderson was, was mentioning, it will increase density in neighborhoods and it will increase it differently than, than what people have seen in the past and what they expect potentially next door to them on a single-family lot.
Josh?
Hi, thank you. Thank you a lot. One of, one of the things that I noticed that was surprising to me is that Eunice mentioned that our, a lot of our greenhouse gases are developed from our car, our vehicle. But it did say that twenty-three percent of the vehicles that come in are coming from outside.
Right.
Yeah. So I'm looking at two factors here. It's possibly more affordable housing. We'll have these people possibly move in here because it's more affordable to live here. But also this, the, the way business now is operating under the COVID-nineteen. Might, and I know this, all this research was done pre- Might, and I know this, all this research was done pre-COVID, but possibly might change the way people do business to where maybe they're not coming into town as often because there might be some, you know, distance, you know, every, working at home. And so that R4, you know, with the people working out of their homes as well as, as, you know, maybe people instead of commuting in, working, I think could also be one factor that we might want to take a look at when we're looking at greenhouse gases. And I know our, our Commissioner Casey Copcho is, he's like our, our head guy on that. And so this is sort of kind of like a, a hint to him to kind of, hey, you know, we'll take a look at that. Anyway, thank you. I just want to make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ah, sorry, Ashley.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I had just a couple of things that struck me. Thank you so much, Eunice. I have attended many A dot exercise and nighttime sessions. So I really appreciate all the work that you and your staff have done and, and everyone from the city have done to, to put this together. And I think we're really coming into like a crucial time for the our Salem plan. I think that as someone who attended a neighborhood association meeting in which Eunice was trying to get people really excited about indicators and data, that, you know, people actually are very much more interested in seeing what's the vision that you have to, to provide to us and let, and then let us give you our, our feedback on it. So I think this is really a crucial time for, for this exercise. And therefore it's really important that, that, that we're making sure we're, we're communicating and crafting a message out to the community that's going to allow them to understand what this is and, and, and be most productive in their conversations moving forward. I'll say a couple of items that I just, you know, struck me most immediately. One is, you know, right away on page three is our draft vision statement. And I think that, you know, draft, you know, vision statements, you know, sometimes it can be overlooked, but I think they are important. And I think people will, will come, go back to them and grab that, that language when, when they talk about the our Salem plan. So I think it would be great if there was something about combating climate change somewhere in this draft vision statement. I also think that some, some wording about celebrating our diversity and inclusion would be wonderful to, to include as well. So thinking about maybe some tweaks to, to the vision statement right, right off the bat. Another thing is, is thank you very much for talking about chariots because it got, got my brain thinking about other big organizations, civic organizations that the city doesn't necessarily control, but really need to play a key role here. And the Salem Kaiser School District, you know, to me, just like flashing, you know, big, big warning signs in my brain in terms of making sure that they are plugged into to this work the same way that, that, that chariots will be in terms of, you know, thinking about how this population growth and how the land use changes that are being considered would play into what capacity the existing school infrastructure has and where the planning is going for future school infrastructure. Additionally, with the, you know, the idea of creating these complete streets, I mean, a huge issue in a lot of communities is safe routes to school. And so really kind of thinking through how we can, you know, you know, merge our efforts. And I know you already are reaching out to them, but, but, you know, really hopefully they'd be able to use the tool that you've created, this interactive map, to be able to give feedback about how that aligns with their long range planning with regards to, to education infrastructure. And then I guess the last thing that I would say as it relates to Councilmember Nanki's comment about neighborhood associations. I think one of the ways in which a planning effort can get easy, most easily derailed is when a neighborhood association has a misconception about information that they're being provided by, by a public entity. And I think that, you know, one of the things that, that I can think of when I think of potential misconceptions that we would, I would love for us to get ahead of in terms of the way that we're messaging this is about that mixed use type. You know, and, and I'll, I'll give an example here. I think that, you know, a lot of times, you know, there is this misconception that we have to try to combat that, you know, when current property owners see mixed use as equivalent to their displacement. And I think that that is, it, it, it's a, there's a huge, there's such an opportunity, I think we have right now to try to make sure that that misconception doesn't move forward, that we can say, no, as a current property owner, you're valued in this community and changing your design, your zoning and your comprehensive plan designation to mixed use is not going to lead to your displacement. And in fact, discuss the connections between that land use and economic prosperity, if it's a business owner or, you know, the, the fact that you have in the residential component anti-displacement as a policy goal. So I think that that, those are things that, you know, to get out ahead of when you're moving forward into the next phase of this workshopping with, with neighborhood associations and the like.
If I, and I failed to mention, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, sorry.
I failed to mention two things. All of your comments reminded me that this effort has not been just a city effort. We have been collaborating with the counties, you know, council of governments, the state, the schools, the, the transit. So I apologize for not mentioning that before. I also failed to mention that we did do a mailing to all of the property owners that could be impacted that basically have a property on this map of the proposed changes. And we might have them to virtual meetings. We only had about 20 people show up, largely people were supportive. But because we know it's going to be a big deal, we have done a, a second mailing to them to let them know about the interactive map and the survey. So hopefully we will hear more from the property owners.
Great, thank you. I want to, I want to second Ashley's comments about the school district. They require substantial contiguous acreage to place an elementary school, high school, middle school. It's, it's a huge amount of acreage. Are, do we con, do we work with them on helping them identify these kinds of, of spaces here in town? Or how, how, how will that work in this planning effort?
So traditionally, what has happened is when the school is ready to do kind of their long range planning, they come to us and ask us kind of what development we see in the future so they can better determine where their growth is going to occur. And, and the last go around, they decided just to do an expansion, expansions, obviously, and not.
Yes, because there's not a lot of the land available, I, I assume.
Yeah, and so we haven't heard a shift from that strategy. I don't know looking out in the future if this will change anything. The one thing we did hear from the school district is that they are interested in making sure that multifamily housing is distributed across the city so that we are not concentrating multifamily housing, concentrating in one neighborhood to have those impacts on the schools. So we have heard that from them.
Well, I hope as we go into adoption of this, that we have a real clear statement from the school district as to kind of how they're going to proceed and how, how we fit in with their long range planning. I think that would be helpful. I had the, I've had the unique opportunity of being a, a newspaper reporter when the last comprehensive plan was approved. And, and then kind of the, again, unique opportunity to serve on the city council and see what happened. And let me tell you how discouraged I am as to the forethought. And this is where I'd kind of like to make sure that you guys are looking out 20, 30, 40 years. And, and I'll, I'll give you a couple of examples. Our east, they really made a decision at that time, planners and the city council, to locate housing in the West Salem Hills and housing in the South Salem Hills, primarily to protect farmland. It was, that was the, you know, meal of the day at that time was protecting farmland. It was early enough in Senate Bill 100's history and, and made a lot of sense then. But I look at the map and I still see the same north-south transportation corridors and east-west transportation corridor. And the housing has just exploded in the south and in the west. Are there any of those landmines in this thing that you can see or that you guys have identified? That if we don't do this, we'll have this problem in 30 years? Because I don't think they saw it back then. I think they really missed an opportunity to seriously consider what was going to happen. Did you, do you guys see any of this kind of thing laying in the, laying in the weeds?
I'm not sure we see any landmines in the future, but I, I think our city is way more built out now, obviously than it was. So the room for change is a little, is, is less. And so that's why we're focusing a lot on, you know, redevelopment and infill to the extent that.
So it's a density now. It'll be more of a density growth than a, an expansion. We're not looking at all at expanding that urban growth fabric.
No, no, we are not.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good.
Mayor Bennett, I have a question if I could.
Who are you?
Commissioner Slater.
Ah, hi, Michael. Go ahead.
Thank you. So Eunice, one of my concerns is that the comprehensive plan is really dependent on private sector investment and then taking on the infrastructure adjacent to the develop, to their property. My concern is what happens to the un, the unimproved property next door, for example. So we have a situation where we've got someone who builds a nice new complete street for a half a block. But then next to that, we have the old infrastructure. And why I'm particularly concerned about that is because when we see large multifamily housing drop into a neighborhood where the adjacent streets then are old infrastructure, which in my neighborhood would meet, would not have sidewalks, for example. How do, how are we going to accommodate the influx of people putting pressure on the adjacent unimproved infrastructure?
Maybe I'll throw that to Lisa to talk a little bit about the development process and the infrastructure improvements that happened.
Sure, thanks, Eunice. You know, I don't think that the comp plan can really address that because when, and as you know now from being on Planning Commission, Commissioner Slater, when there's a development application, we're really limited on what we can require a developer to build. You know, it has to be proportional to what they're proposing. It has to be a nexus. That, you know, that's the number one comment we get from a new subdivision or apartments. If it's on a street without sidewalks is that it's not enough for them just to build the sidewalks in front of their development. But most of the time, we're really limited if it's not, you know, a zone change or something, it's already permitted. Even, even in a zone change, we're still pretty limited on how we can just make them do that. I think we can make priorities about where we're going to spend our money on street improvements as a city. And so if we're looking to upzone certain streets and add more density and they don't have that infrastructure, they don't have sidewalks or bike lanes, then we can decide that that's what we want to prioritize in our funding with CIP, our next bond, or any federal money we get and, and all of those things. So through the comp plan, through the TSP, and then through our funding, it's kind of an implementation through the CIP, et cetera. We can make those decisions if we constantly are thinking about where do we want this new growth to go? What kind of density are we proposing? And then keeping that in mind when we pick projects to fund. But it, it, it's not an easy process, right? There's, I know the council knows that every time there's funding for a, a street project, there's way more needs than there are, there is money, right? And every neighborhood wants their sidewalk, their intersection, their connection to their park, their crosswalk. And we just don't have enough money for all of them. So that's one of the reasons we're looking at more of the major corridors for some of this mixed use and increased density is because generally they are served by sidewalks, bike lanes, transit, et cetera.
I mean, to follow up on the mayor's question, if I may, it sounds like one of the traps that we might be getting ourselves into is a big political demand on the part of neighborhoods to fund the connecting infrastructure. And we can find ourselves kind of being deluged with requests from neighbors to say, well, they just built this multi, you know, family housing and I need my street improved so that works. And we can start seeing that multiply across the city. Is that a possible outcome of this process?
I think, yeah, I think that's fair, but remember all of the land that we're talking about already has development potential, right? So without any changes today, that's, again, there's way more demand for improvements than we have money for. And so, for example, some of the land we're looking at multifamily, it's, it's vacant and zone single family today. And I know the planning commissioners and the councilors know that subdivisions are just as contentious, right? Infill subdivisions on streets like, you know, Salem Heights or something like that than, than apartments are. And so it's, it's the same kind of demand on that money and that infrastructure, whether we're adding more minutes or not, so.
I guess I just wanted to flag it because it sounds like when we get to the transportation plan, we also really need to be talking about long-term budget and capital improvement discussions and make sure that's tied together. Or we could find that we're moving the capital improvement plan in a way that isn't supporting what is a new comprehensive plan with this emphasis on density. Is that, is that a reasonable statement?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Vanessa?
Thank you, Mayor. So it sounds to me like, based on what Commissioner Slater and staff are talking about, is that the true cost of developing property is not limited to the property boundaries. That anytime you put in, you put in a new, for example, multifamily chunk of housing in a neighborhood and they just build out the sidewalk right in front of that new private property area where that new development's going in, that it actually puts pressure on the neighbors around it. It puts pressure on all the streets, pressure on all the schools, pressure on all the parks because it is expected that once the new folks move in, they're going to want to drive on those streets, use those parks and, and put their children in those schools. So, you know, I do think it is worthy of flagging. I appreciate Commissioner Slater saying that. It just goes to show that, you know, you can't approve development in a vacuum. It can really have long-reaching impacts beyond their property line. And I don't know the answer to that question. I just, again, I think it's important that we flag some of these issues now since we're in a rare opportunity for both our Planning Commission and our City Council to have a group discussion. And I hope that Planning Commission is, I, if you're, I don't know if you're already discussing those impacts as a commission, but it certainly is something that I do see a lot as a city councillor, that a lot of neighborhood groups are always concerned about what the impact of that property development will be in their neighborhood. The other concern that I've heard that I again want to flag for everyone's interest is the adequacy of notice. Right now, the, I think our rules about notification for potential development are fairly limited. The neighborhood association receives notice. And I, if I remember correctly, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, the only other group that receives notice are neighbors within about 250 feet of the proposed development. And if that's the case, you know, somehow I could understand how that's not enough notice. And I've received complaints from residents in my ward saying, how did I not receive notice? I'm just a block away or I'm two blocks away. So I would be curious to know if there's a way to increase the level of notification because certainly folks want to know if a big development is going into their neighborhood and will impact their streets, parks and schools and other amenities in the neighborhood.
Councilor Nanki, I recall you chairing a committee on this. Can you kind of open up?
Yeah, that's why my hand kind of went up there. Because we had the, the Neighborhood Task Force, that was back when Counselor Tartar was in Ward Five, she chaired that with me. And we talked about communicate, and that's how the communication funds actually initiated for the neighborhood associations as well. We expanded the boundaries to an extent. But then there was also where just a really long road goes down. The development is at the, the terminus of that road as it comes out to a, say, a major arterial and all these people who, that's their only way out of their neighborhood, all of a sudden see this massive development. And so that's kind of where the communication funds were put in place so a neighborhood could notify those people who may not otherwise be notified that something was happening. But we had a ton of discussion on, on notifications. And I think we increased that significantly from what it was in the past as well, so.
Did you all file a report with the city? Did you, did you file a report with the city? I can't remember your, the outcome. I was on that too. And I'm, I'm trying to remember how you, how you handled that.
It might actually be a good thing just to pop that report back up because there was a lot of.
Lot of information and I think it.
A lot of different avenues. It wasn't just notification. It was neighborhoods in general. It was notifications for land use issues. Numerous, numerous items in that, how we interacted with the neighborhood associations as well, which kind of gets back to what Commissioner Schweickert was saying. And in the case of Morningside, it's not necessarily the mixed use piece. It's, it's transportation intensive development in and around transportation facilities that are substandard or inferior currently.
Eunice or Lisa.
Came out today.
Or Norman, could you dig that one out of the aisle or pull it off the shelf and make it available to to us to to take a look at it? I, because Counselor Nordike is hitting on a common concern and it was, it's a long-term common concern is whenever there's nervous notice, it's never adequate. Somebody doesn't get the message. And and there's reasons for it. And this also looked at all that. And I think it'd be helpful to see if if the councillor would like to look at a, at a relook at this thing to be, to get a look at what we've done in the past. I think it's been about 12, now, been longer than that, probably 15 years ago. Been a long time.
It's been a very long time.
But I think it'd be helpful to see what has been done. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do know that, and the mayor was kind of tangentially involved in this, but I've been the councillor who's been involved in it. The state is updating its building codes. Yeah, and it's a big.
Oh, no.
And the the, you know, that relates a little bit to our Salem and it talks about sustainable building. And and if the state building code is changed, there's a potential that there could be in the statute a reach code. So the cities could go above the state building code. So that has something to do with planning. And I know that Rabee, I'm going to not get his last name right, but Rabee Tamerlow, I think, of our Building Department. I'm not even close, but I'm, yeah, he's the Chair of the of the Advisory Committee to the State Building Code Update. So you just might want to talk with him a little bit because that also, again, relates into climate action, greenhouse gas emissions, which comes from from building the buildings and then from the buildings themselves when they're operating. And that's kind of the focus of what the new building code is going to be. So you might want to at least check in with that.
Yeah, that's a really good thought. Ah, sorry, Josh.
Actually, we'd like Lisa to address this because in case you you weren't aware, we had changes in the UDC code regarding notice. One was any comprehensive planned or or ma- map changes had to have an open house.
Right.
And that was way before they even put in an application. Then there's, if they're a member of a a ho- a homeowners association, you had to actually put down whether they're a homeowners association so they can notify the homeowners association. Now, that's different than the Neighborhood Association at the time of application. And the fact that that the Neighborhood Association used to get notice the, at the same two weeks when the staff report was out. Well, no, now they get notice, you know, ahead of time. These are all recent you changes and we're starting to see them, in fact, in our staff reports. And so is there anything that I missed, Lisa?
No, that's great, Commissioner Paul. Like, you know, we're hiring a planner if you, if you're looking for a position. That was a great report. Yeah, we, those those changes were all made last summer and they've all been implemented. And we've had quite a few applications come through where we, at the Planning Commission, the the commission has made it clear they want to see the results of that in the staff reports. So we've put that in there now with the open houses, the Neighborhood Association meetings. And I think it's had a positive impact on the amount of time.
Did you share that also with Counselor Nordike?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor, the other addition to the change was that we notify tenants of buildings, not just the owners.
Very good. Well, it sounds fairly robust, unless you live 500 feet away in a single-family home, apparently. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just one last follow-up on the Counselor Nordike's comments earlier in regards to you have a large development and put strain on on other things. And that's kind of what SDCs, as Counselor Anderson will tell you, we're we're designed for. We need to be very cognizant that if we want development to pay more, the affordability of our housing suffers from that as well. And so we we have a significant balancing act to do, both as the as the council and the Planning Commission when it comes to that affordable housing as in relationship to neighborhood livability as well. So I only have a few months left to do that and I'm I'm sure my incoming councillor will will relish the experience of dealing with that.
Dream come true. Counselor Kazer?
Yeah, thank you. You know, it's switched topics a little bit here. I really like the idea presented in the proposed plan of the Neighborhood Hub. I think that's, I think that's an idea that we used, we used to have, maybe not Oregon, well, maybe Portland, Oregon, older cities, but you see that in other or other parts of the country and and other countries, actually. And I I really think that that's, that's a great idea so that we can put more of those basic services. Like, I know in Ward One, we don't have a whole lot of like grocery stores close by. They're all kind of out because they're huge, big box stores usually. You don't have like small grocery stores, so.
Safeway, Counselor, Safeway.
Well, there is Safeway. That's about it. So. But, so I like that idea a lot. I guess my question is, I look at, for example, you put in there an example from Highland where the old Highland Market's at, which I grew up going to as a kid. And that's, that's, that doesn't exist anymore. I mean, the building is there. My question is, is will there be some, I guess, guardrails, parameters, something, criteria for what could go there? Not in terms of of scale and compatibility, but in terms of use? Because what I'd hate to see is like, I don't know, like a, a, a come-in-and-get-quick-cash kind of store going in that place as opposed to a market or a barber or some type of service like that. I wouldn't want to see something that just is totally incongruent with like people living there, per se. So how are we going to maybe create some boundaries or is that, have we thought about that in the Neighborhood Hub designation?
Yes, definitely. As part of the Neighborhood Hub survey that we did, we did ask people what types of uses they wanted to see in the hub. And the idea is that if this idea moves forward, we would create a specific zone that allowed and prohibited certain uses. So that's kind of how we would put controls around it.
That has a mixed history. What else you got? Anybody else? Real quick, who am I missing? Ah, Casey, I wondered if you were just going to sit there quietly, man?
I'm a quiet guy, Mayor. I will note, it, in my reading of the Neighborhood Hub thing, to follow up with that last comment from Counselor Kazer, I didn't, I don't think in the top four choices I saw anything grocery-related. I know cafe and restaurants, I think, was number one. But I, I guess you could go to a restaurant and get your milk to go. But I'm not really sure if I saw anything like a bodega. But my question relates to to a number of things. And obviously, I want to echo everyone's thanks. But, you know, we we can only shower you with so many compliments, Eunice and Lisa. So, you know, next week, we meet again in Planning Commission and I'll do it again there. So with respect to the, you know, what I saw a lot in the plan is kind of painting a broad brush on on the multi-use, which I I think is great. I did see a lot of building up around the already existing arterials of commercial Lancaster. But one thing that I didn't see specifically, and I wonder if you could speak to it, if there's any discussion on, you know, as we look to increase diversification and densification, converting those heavily trafficked arterials into more of a modern arterial multi-way boulevard with, you know, like a road with a tree separated one way on either side. So that way, we can really kind of work toward a future vision where we have these neighborhood hubs and we have them accessible with the one ways on either side, but we have the point-to-point connection down the middle, which is ultimately safer and more convenient for folks. So if there's any discussion around anything like that.
Sure. Yeah, Julie Wannicki and I have talked about kind of the design of streets, that issue particularly about changing maybe the the design or the safety even of of some of those streets and what that could look like. So, yeah, that's something that we would look into. Whether it's a new design or different design or just implementing the designs that already exist in the TSP. Some of those major areas, they call for, you know, kind of a boulevard tree in the middle sort of thing. And so that then comes down to designing and funding. But yes, we will talk about design.
Eunice, as you, kind of following up on that design issue, as you look at more multifamily, mixed use in, particularly as you look into the residential neighborhoods, but also along major streets, are you looking at a more robust design review program as well so that housing coming into neighborhoods tends to be compatible with the neighborhood? Will you be doing that kind of work as well? Is that talked about in this plan?
So the two most recent mixed-use zones that we created do have design standards within them. But we did try to streamline the process so it wasn't a separate public hearing design review. It was just done as part of the the kind of site plan review. So, yes, we we will talk about design. There there is some sort of balance. We have heard from some folks that are concerned about putting too many design requirements around new development. So I think there is a balance. But we have definitely talked design. It's specifically also about the neighborhood hubs. What should they look like? So, yes, it's definitely consideration.
Okay. Okay. Ashley?
Just on that point, you know, the the Planning Department also just recently went through the multifamily design update. So that was something that I thought was a very thoughtful way of providing feedback to developers on designs that are, would, I think, play well into some of the ideas that we're seeing and the guiding principles that we're seeing here in this plan with regards to the potential densification of residential as it relates to, you know, the, you know, state mandates that we're seeing for things like duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. I think that the the multifamily design update will help us build those types of units in a way that is compatible with the existing neighborhoods in which they will be, you know, put into. And and not to say we're not going to get plenty of community feedback anyway, but I think that that at least we've been proactive as a city in in utilizing grant funds towards that purpose.
Are you satisfied with what you saw?
Talking to me?
What you've seen in design review? I I just, just want to get you on the record, Ashley. Where, what do you think?
Well, we haven't, we haven't had a lot of folks come come before the Planning Commission because what was, what I think the multifamily design update allowed was that the planning administrator at the administrative level could be approving things that otherwise would have to come for some sort of variance or exception. So that's been a great way of streamlining the process of allowing development of this type.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to touch on three things briefly. The first is the streets. One caution there is that there there are some difficulties in the street design because some of the streets are owned by state or county. So just remembering that that's a partnership we have to deal with with those street designs. The second thing was that, was I wanted to agree with Eunice in that that's a difficult balance with the design review because some developers will walk away from a project because they don't want to jump through all those hoops. So I I applaud you in that you're understanding that balance. The third thing I wanted to mention was that we we talked, I've heard a lot of people say, so the focus of the plan is density. We need to be very, very careful about that. We are looking at densification in specific areas where it makes sense. Then I think we really need to focus on a mix, mix of uses that that work in in areas that that also makes sense. So and I'm just looking at messaging as as we release this plan. Density can be a dirty word for some people, even though I believe that it's a very important thing strategically placed. But I just want to just caution us all as we as we start talking about this that that we don't say that this, this is all about density and cramming density in neighborhoods because that could really lead us down a path that would not be pretty.
One of the things I noticed, Eunice, kind of following up on that was, if I if I understood it correctly, which is very possible I didn't, but a a more permissive allowance of commercial zoning in residential areas. Did I understand that correctly? You're looking at making it easier to move into residential neighborhoods with commercial development? Is that, or is that just somebody describing the R4 zone?
So that's mostly the R4 zone and the neighborhood hubs. I would say that the flexibility we are trying to build into the mixed-use designation so that permissive, if you want to do housing, you can. If you want to do office or retail, you can, or you can do it all together. But we're not talking about allowing commercial uses broadly, just anywhere in the single-family zone. So really focusing on the neighborhood hub and then the R4, so on arterials.
A a common and maybe Counselor Hoy, if he gets the same emails, is a con- concern where people, it looks to people that are contacting us like somebody is doing a home business that is impacting the neighborhood substantially. And that would include even auto repair or things like it. Would that be, would it go that far in this R4 zone? But what would this, because right now, we have, actually, you can have a business in your home. You can work at home. We allow a a range of these and have for years. What, what will be different? What would people be looking for?
So in terms of the R4, we're, we're, we're thinking about just opening it up a little bit more. So right now, you can do a home occupation like an office, but you can't sell things. You can't do retail, for example. The idea is just to open it up a little bit on those arterials. And the idea is not to open it up to car repair and auto sales.
But retail.
But retail. And so this would, again, would be a new zone where we would look at all the uses that should be allowed or prohibited. And that's how we would kind of control for these.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's only in a, as I understand it, it's only in a very limited number of areas. It's not, it's not throughout our neighborhoods by any means. It's it's in some key strategic locations where it makes sense. Not, not, not in every street by any means.
Would, would you agree with me? This needs to be really, really clear because we have people who've had experiences in their neighborhoods with businesses?
Oh, yes. Come to my house and I, I have a stone throw currently. Yes.
Okay, I just, I I would just kind of red-flag that one as needing really careful explanation and probably some, some additional discussion to make sure people understand what it is you're talking about. I mean, it really makes sense, but I, I think that there there are enough situations out there that we hear about that you you might, you might get flack for that. I think it fits with what Scott's describing as well. We need to be real careful with some of these and really explain them well.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as someone who used the dirty word densification, I feel somewhat compelled to 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 defend myself.
Just for using the word densification.
Just, you know, it's, it's, I hear it's one of the seven words you can't say. Yeah, I don't know what the other six are. They all might be densification. So, you know, one thing that I just want to make clear too is something that the mayor alluded to earlier, which is this is a long, long-term planning process. This is 30 years from now. So if I say densification, it doesn't, you know, my implication isn't that suddenly on every street corner, we're going to have a 250-unit apartment complex and everybody's going to lose their mind. It's, it's what do we want the city as as the residents of the city to look like 30 years from now? And how can we make sure that we don't do what, you know, 30 years prior happened when they missed the mark? And here we are where we've got, you know, any number of problems that come before the council or the planning commission that we that we all know and love. And so that's, that's really what I want to make sure that this process helps us avoid. And so kind of with that, one thing that I didn't see, and I I did read through the whole thing, including the appendices, because I usually just go straight to the appendices because I'm a data nerd. And I didn't see any. So, but maybe I missed it. And specifically like data that would support, you know, specific draft metrics or measurements or goal. You know, I saw, I read through all the draft goals and policies. But, you know, whether it's like different, you know, 20%, you know, increase in the, you know, multimodal. know, uh, multi-modal transfer, how people get from place to place. So bike pad, whatever it is, or the number of miles, uh, that people drive within the city, or whatever those targets, just some draft targets and then the, you know, the map that we would use to support how we came up with those. And so one, is there any of that is, is a question? And then two, is there anything stopping, uh, the council, not to put the council on the spot, but is, you know, outside of the climate action, um, plan, uh, process, uh, there's a number of, you know, the IPCC, the, the kind of international standard for emissions reductions targets, as well as other cities and everybody else, uh, setting targets by 2030, by 2045, by 2050. Is there anything stopping us from just establishing those targets and then working toward, you know, a long-term strategy to get there, including the RCL and process? Or is that just entirely climate action task force?
Think you'd find that the climate action task forces, they develop the plan, developing targets and dates and, and, and then perhaps even describing what sort of milestones we need to see being achieved along the way to say this isn't a fool's errand, uh, that we're on, that we're getting there and we, or we need to make massive course, course adjustments. So I, I think that's where you'll find it, but it's going to be part of this, uh, comprehensive planning process. If I understood you correctly, Unis, that's kind of how you're going to integrate it?
Well, yeah, if I can follow up, thanks. Um, my, my concern is that that process has, you know, um, out until December 2021. And so if that's when that ends and we can have targets to work toward, where are we at with our Salem? And what are, you know, there, the, the two things are so interconnected with how we're visioning, um, our zoning and our transportation network. Um, and those are the two things that most impact greenhouse gas emissions. So, you know, it just seems to me that, um, I, I, I hope we're, um, really integrated in our approach. So.
You are.
Yeah, and we will, we will, we are constantly working together. Um, and I, I think I mentioned earlier that if there are targets that are established through the climate action plan, we can bring them over and include them in the comprehensive plan. Um, and I, and yes, I think that there could be some strategies related to transportation that come out of the climate action plan. I'm not leaving that, but I'm, will be involved. And so that can also inform the update to the transportation system plan, which will happen after our Salem. That's what we're anticipating.
Anyone else?
May I ask a question again?
Oh, yeah.
Later, thank you. Uh, to switch subjects just a little bit, Unis, can you talk a little bit about, uh, anything related to kind of, um, cultural spaces or kind of, uh, developing local neighborhood identity? Uh, I know you saw that, you made that point on one of your slides, but I didn't see a lot of that in the map. So how, how are those, how is zoning related to some of those activities?
Sure. You don't see it in the map because a lot of those uses are allowed throughout a lot of our comp plan designations in our zones. So it really will be a matter of trying to figure out, can we incentivize it and, or is there some sort of partnership we can form, um, to, to help move that along? We have heard that people want community spaces, they want to celebrate our diversity and our heritages and just the identities of the neighborhood more. Um, but that's not something that you would see reflected in the map. We do plan to have an implementation plan that will be developed as part of the comprehensive plan, um, as part of this project. And so perhaps some of those details will be in there, but you won't see them in the map.
May I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, and, and similarly, some of the disaster preparedness issues that are now becoming more apparent to us, like the need for cooling centers, refugee, you know, temporary refugee housing, things like that, uh, is, would that then be part of the implementation plan rather than a zoning map issue?
Um, that's a good question. I think some of that could also be in our policies. Um, given the recent fires, I've reached out to Greg Walsh to, to see if we could start talking more about that. We've talked about earthquake preparedness and resiliency, kind of, um, we've talked a lot about the pandemic in terms of, you know, what that looks like. But, um, I think those are ongoing conversations that we could see in our policies.
Thank you.
Uh, Unis, one other thing I wanted to follow up on is, um, in the economic development section you mentioned of, of the plan, will you be looking at future, uh, urban renewal areas, areas that you will have identified that urban, and I'm thinking of areas like North Lancaster or some of the other areas in town that might be, uh, well-served by adding, by using urban renewal as part of the development strategy? Will you be looking at, because it, it does have some real implications for, uh, development, uh, as well as economic development? That be part of your?
We haven't identified any areas now. That's not something that we've, um, done yet. I think if we start looking through implementation, we could consider that, but I know that urban development has already started thinking ahead in terms of where the next urban renewal areas could be. So I think that'd be a very close coordination conversation with urban development.
And, but would it go into our comprehensive plan that we are looking, you know, as you, as somebody coming in from outside looks at our city and particularly looks at it for economic development opportunities, could they be handed the comprehensive plan, which we usually, they'll ask for, particularly this early in the development of one? Would they be able to go to the economic development page and see where the department is starting to look for the kind of economic development opportunities that we've got outlined inside the plan?
It looks like Ms. Gorski has joined us, Mr. Mayor.
Let that get her going.
Did you want to take that, Annie?
Annie, are you there?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Annie Gorski, Economic Development Manager. Um, I think that that's also something that we can, um, consider and do some additional outreach on through the economic development strategy that will be starting on this fall. Um, we've heard from the community about interest in considering, you know, State Street, um, heard from, um, counselors in the community about, you know, looking at Lancaster potentially as another, uh, urban renewal area. Um, in order to add new urban renewal areas, we need to, um, because of our, um, cap on percentage of acreage in the, um, city that's in urban renewal, we also need to, um, close or reduce acreage in other areas. So I think we plan to come back to council this fall to talk about the airport and a potential plan amendment, um, uh, to the Fairview Urban Renewal District that would reduce acreage there so we could have additional acreage to open or consider opening or creating new urban renewal districts.
Well, Annie, would that be a helpful part of our planning as we look at, uh, economic development? We're looking at supportive workforce housing? We're looking at, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
How that, those pieces fit together to have that as part of the economic development portion of the plan?
Uh, to have as part of the active portion of the plan in the R-Salem piece to consider? It could be, and that's where, um, you know, the outreach that we're doing, it will also include looking at the goals and priorities in our existing urban renewal districts. You know, have we achieved the goals, um, within those districts? In addition to considering new districts, um, I think that's where, uh, we may have some joint meetings between, um, planning and urban development to outreach and then fold in any recommendations, uh, potentially into both, both pieces. But I am guessing the implementation and the detail would likely go into the economic development strategy?
Yeah, yeah, I just am looking, I, I just hoping that we, we wouldn't just have economic developments important to Salem and move along. I mean, if we can go more specifically in that comp plan as to where some of this might be, certainly no one was envisioning Mill Creek 30, 40 years ago or some of these others, but we've successfully located some of our industrial development, but we've also lost industrial land to housing and some other things. So I, I, I think, uh, sometimes it helps and, and I, I tend to think of urban renewal as one of our, uh, stronger tools that we, that we trot out, so.
We will consider that, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, you, let me just take a quick look. That looks to me like it's time to adjourn then. So thank you very much. This was very helpful. Have a good evening. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.